Good evening and welcome to this month's Planning Commission regular meeting, Wednesday, January 24th, 1800 hours. I will now call this meeting to order. Let's do the Pledge of Legions.
Our pledge of allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, will you please call Roe?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ladoo?
Here.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Here.
Commissioner Suther?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
Well, good evening, everyone. As you know, I'm going to be playing Vice Chair tonight because our esteemed Chair, Gerald Maloney, has become a member of City Council. For that, we're going to offer a special presentation, Planning Commission Resolution 2024-001, a resolution in gratitude and recognition of Gerald Maloney's several years of service on the City of Canyon City Planning Commission. How do we want to do this, Patrick? We just want to go ahead and read this proclamation? Where is Mr. Maloney? Do you want to stand or are we just?
Come on.
All right, we're going to go ahead and start this and I think we're going to go ahead and do a little participation. So, whereas the City of Canyon City Planning Commission is a body organized under the city's municipal code to serve as the recommending agency on pending land use matters and policy issues of a planning and zoning nature in order to shape the future development of Canyon City in a positive and cohesive manner and?
Go ahead, DeeDee.
Whereas? Whereas the City of Canyon City Planning Commission, a deliberate board of inquiry, operates under Robert's Rules of Order and Colorado State statutes pertaining to the powers of the duty of municipal planning commission and?
Whereas Gerald Maloney, Canyon City resident and business owner, was appointed to the Planning Commission in 2016 and?
Let me go. 2016.
And whereas, as Planning Commission member Gerald Maloney has served as Vice Chair since, and since 2017, as Chair of the Planning Commission and?
Whereas during his tenure as Chair, the Planning Commission has heard a wide variety of land use applications and has worked diligently to update the city's comprehensive plan and Unified Development Code for the first time since 2001 and?
And whereas, under Chairman Maloney's leadership, the city's comprehensive plan and Unified Development Code update were completed within 14 months of starting and were completed in the midst of a global pandemic and?
Go ahead.
Whereas, in November 2023, Chairman Maloney was elected to the City Council for the City of Canyon City, a position which will require him to relinquish his position as Planning Commission Chair.
Now, therefore, in recognition of Gerald Maloney's efforts, dedication, and leadership, the City of Canyon City Planning Commission wishes to thank Gerald Maloney for eight years of hard work dated this 24th day of January 2024. Yay!
Well done, well done.
Well, thank you for that. I wasn't expecting all that. I'm happy to be here and as you can see, you didn't get rid of me, apparently, so.
That's good.
I'll continue to work with you guys on Planning Commission for the next few years anyway, so thank you, thank you very much for that.
We'll get you this signed and notarized until you a little bit later tonight. All right? Okay. I now ask for approval of minutes for the August 23rd, '23 regular meeting. It's been a while.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Denise, call Roe.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladoo?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye. Next, number four, public hearing. We have a special review use, 700 Macon Avenue. Mr. Maroni, if you can help us, talk to us a little bit about it, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. We have three special review uses to hear before you this evening and since all special review uses are reviewed in essentially the same manner, forgive me in advance if this begins to sound a bit redundant by the time we get to the third one this evening. This evening, we are here to consider a request by applicant BBLCI Properties for approval to locate multifamily residential as the principal use of a property within the CB Central Business District Commercial Zone. Although above-ground floor residential is a permitted use within the CB Zone District multifamily residential, as a principal use of the property requires special review use approval. Subject property is a 5,435-square-foot parcel located at the southeast corner of 7th Street and Macon Avenue, just one block north of Main Street. As it is within the CB Central Business District zoning that characterizes downtown Canyon City, it is surrounded by commercial office uses, event venues, government offices, and religious uses. The property was part of the original incorporation of Canyon City in 1872. Site contains one building with two above-ground levels and a basement enclosing approximately 2,300 square feet. Its construction originally dates from around 1933. Historically, it was used as a doctor's office with a residence above the ground floor, although the type of office on the ground floor has changed over time. The above-ground floor space was consistently used as a residence whether associated with the ground floor business or not. As the, as the property is owned CB Central Business District multifamily dwelling building, meaning multiple residences within a building, it is designated as a special review use which requires public hearings before Planning Commission and City Council. Special review uses are described in Section 1710-030 of the UDC as a type of discretionary use under zoning in which certain aspects of the use may potentially cause conflicts with surrounding uses and may therefore need additional conditions imposed upon them to mitigate these conflicts, or if these conflicts are too significant, the use can be denied as part of a public hearing. The reason multifamily dwelling building categori, is categorized as a special review use is because of how it is defined within the intent of the CB Central Business District. As defined in Section 1702-030, the CB District is intended to foster the continued economic vitality of downtown Canyon City's historic downtown and to provide and preserve a central setting for pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development as well as cultural amenities. The way the CB Zone is written, the intent is to allow uses at the ground level which activate the street level or pedestrian area. This is why typically you see restaurants, nightclubs, and retail on the ground floor with residential above. Therefore, the analysis of this particular special review use involves one of compatibility with surrounding uses. The analysis for any special review use is found in Section 1710-030 of the Unified Development Code and includes three criteria: compliance with, generally with, the requirements of Chapter 1710, consistency with the purposes of the UDC, and that the use can be found to be compatible with surrounding land uses and the area where the use is to be situated. Section 3 of the staff report summarizes how this proposal is viewed in light of each of these criteria. It is important to note that the surrounding uses, which, as I mentioned previously, include general and medical, general medical and governmental office, an event venue and a church, as well as the site's location being a block removed from Main Street and parking. The applicant has provided a graphic indicating how they believe they can accommodate the nine parking spaces that are required for the use entirely on-site. However, as an option, the applicant can also pay the city an in-lu fee for each parking space they fall short of the required minimum in order to satisfy the requirement. Ultimately, staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the three criteria for special review uses and this proposal can be considered for approval at this location. Now, as of today's date, or actually as of Monday's date when I prepared this, staff has not received any phone, mail, or email communications concerning this proposal. Public notice requirements concerning the proposal before the public hearing have been met in the timeframe required by the UDC. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, following a public hearing on this request, cite the four findings of fact as certification of Canyon City's jurisdiction to act on the special review use request for multifamily residential as the principal use of the property at 700 Macon Avenue. Staff also recommends that Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the use by special review request to allow multifamily residential as the principal use of the property at 700 Macon Avenue. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. I believe the applicant, Brendan Herrera, is here this evening to speak on the application as well.
Should we have any comments from the audience? Is anyone here? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Patrick.
Oh, go ahead.
In the, in your words, I'm sorry, in your, in your paper documents, you talk about vertical integration. Can you remind me what that is again?
That's a vertical integration of uses where, in the case of the CB Zone in particular, your ground floor use is some sort of a commercial, such as a restaurant, retail, a nightclub, and then your above-ground floor would be something else, like residential.
Okay. And then, can you also just remind me about the $5,000 per space parking? Like, yeah, I know we talked about that a few months ago, but just remind me again.
So, when we updated our current UDC in 2021, one of the provisions that changed was that unlike any commercial use that's going into the Central Business District, residential uses are required to provide off-street parking to meet their, their goal. And that, that parking comes with a requirement of 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit. So with this proposal wanting to create six dwelling units, that's a nine parking space requirement. Their graphic shows they think they can meet that on-site. If they can't, as an option, they can satisfy the balance of whatever deficit in parking they're short on-site by paying the city $5,000 per spaces and in-lu fee that the city then can use to acquire public parking facilities elsewhere downtown.
Thank you.
Patrick, but if I understand you correctly, that's something we're not technically covering this evening from the parking angle because that'll be based off the plans that are submitted to the city?
At this point, if they get approved, what would happen is they move into their building permit submittal. And as part of their building permit, they will provide me with a plan as to their parking on-site. When I can confirm that their parking is dimensionally correct in terms of, you know, size of the parking spaces and number of spaces that they have to have, I sign off on that or I point out to them, you're short whatever quantity of spaces and they can write a check for it. So this approval would cover both options. Okay, thank you.
Okay, before going further, I skipped a very important part.
Mm-hmm.
I now need to open up this as a public hearing.
That would be a good thing to do.
I did that. Okay. Should I read the provisions, just to make it official as well?
Yes, sir.
The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17, therefore the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. Now, could I ask for any comments of the audience? There are none, I would gather. Are there any additional questions from the council?
Just was wondering, you've got six units. Are they going to be like a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or?
I believe they're either going to be one-bedroom or sort of studio efficiency units.
Any idea as far as square footage for the units?
Well, 2,300 square feet divided by six units comes to not much per unit. So the intention, I think, is to make these kind of attainable, affordable housing for this particular portion of Canyon City.
And what do you classify as affordable?
On a per-rent basis?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. That's a question Rick Harmon, our Economic Development Director, would probably be better able to answer than I would.
But he's been involved in this?
He, he is aware of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from commission?
Is, is Christian Herrera here tonight? Are you willing to come up and maybe to share a little bit about this project?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If you could state your name and your address for the record, please?
I believe he can probably answer your, your per-rent or your, your per-unit rent question.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was your question?
State your name and your address for the public record, please.
Sure. My name is Christian Herrera. I'm with BBLCI Properties and my address is, is in Colorado Springs. Like my residential address? I'm sorry, I've never done this.
I would imagine, yes, please.
Okay, yeah, the address would be 262 Dole My Drive, Colorado Springs, Colorado.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. Sure, so I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the project. Initially, we submitted for a six unit. After going through a couple of plans back and forth with our architect, I think that we're probably going to go to a five unit or submit a change going that way just because of spacing, like you were kind of saying. Dividing out that, or dividing that amount of square footage into six properties or six units is probably not going to be ideal and provide enough space for each unit. We're looking at trying to provide two, two-bedroom units and the rest would be a single-bedroom unit with three being on the top floor, two being on the bottom floor. The basement is actually quite large, but we're not planning on doing anything with that as we'd have access issues that we'd have to overcome. With regards to the price of rent on each of those units, it would be completely set on the market at the time of completion, which we're hoping to be within the next 12 months. Right now, we're trying, we're not trying to go above any sort of market value that way or push the, with the market value. We're just trying to add housing at a reasonable price for, for now, for those sizes.
Are there any questions?
And Mr. Herrera, I think you, in your letter that you wrote, doesn't sound like you plan on changing the outside of the building. It's just the inside of the building that is going to be renovated. You're not going to change how it looks like on the outside?
That's correct. The only, we're not going to do anything to the outside of the building. It's actually a very beautiful building, so we're trying to keep the character as much as we can intact that way. I believe we'll have to switch out the windows, but we'll do our best to kind of maintain that, that look that it has currently, if you are familiar with it. And as far as the inside, I'm sure nobody's really seen it. It's beautiful as well, so we're doing as much as we can to kind of preserve that look on the inside. There's phenomenal woodwork in there. It's, it's been very well preserved, so we're trying to preserve that.
And then I have just one last question. Do you have any idea of like how long, like when you'll start the renovation and potentially when those apartments will be available?
Sure, so we are, we're looking to start, we're ready to start the renovation as soon as we get approval from the building apartment. So as long as everything passes through the Planning Commission's and every process here forward, we're ready to start as soon as we get approval from the building. And, and as far as completion, we would like to be done within the next nine months maximum, so.
How would they be advertised as far as availability for residents?
Sure, we would probably utilize Zillow for the most part. I have a couple rentals in town already that we utilize Zillow and we get plenty of responses that way. We've also utilized places, or I'm sorry, platforms like Facebook Marketplace. People are very active on there. We seem to get hits immediately with regards to that, so. Yeah, I don't think we're going to have any issue. People respond within hours, so.
Okay. Any further discussion?
If somebody else in the audience?
No, we subsidize, council.
No, sir.
Sure. All right, if there are no more discussion items, I now close this public hearing. I now call for a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council for the special review use for 700 Macon. Yes, sir.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the four findings of fact regarding the proposed?
Turn your mic on.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Gary. I'm glad you're here. I move that Planning Commission adopt four findings of fact regarding the proposed special review use to allow multifamily residential as a principal use of the property at 700 Macon Avenue in the Central Business District Commercial Zone.
I'll second that.
Denise, will you call Roe?
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladoo?
Aye.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye. I now call for a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council for the special review use.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. I move the Planning Commission recommend council approve the special review use to permit multifamily residential as a principal use of the property at 700 Macon Avenue, the CB Central Business District Commercial Zone.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Denise, will you please call Roe?
Certainly. Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladoo?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye. Thank you, sir. You don't have to stay at the podium.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, B, special use, 3105 East US Highway 50 Walmart. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17, therefore the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record hearing as set forth verbatim. Can we have a staff report from the city planner, please?
Certainly. Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, our second item this evening is a request by applicant Walmart for approval to locate a permanent outdoor storage location as an accessory use for the property in the GC General Commercial Zone District. Even though this is considered an accessory use within the principal retail function of Walmart, under the city's land use code, this GC zone, in this GC Zone District, it is considered a special review use. Walmart is the single biggest commercial property in Canyon City with a lot that encompasses 16.2 acres in area, giving access from two full-movement intersections along Dozier Avenue, a full-movement intersection on Fremont Drive, shared with Peerless Tire, and a full-movement intersection off Berry Parkway to the east. To the east and south, Walmart is bordered by commercial uses within the same GC General Commercial zoning. However, areas to the west and north are in unincorporated Fremont County. To the west are two residential areas. One is owned HDR, High Density Residential, comprising the Country Green Apartments, and the other is owned AS Agricultural Suburban, comprising the Glenmore Estates neighborhood. To the north is a business park, Zoned B Business District, and a field, Zoned AS, and is currently used as pastureland. The Walmart property was annexed in 1986 and construction on the building dates from 1999. The building itself is approximately 181,210 square feet and, as is typical for big-box retailers, the site is overparked, exceeding parking minimums. The reason for the request stems from the city's observation that during the pandemic in 2020 and 2021, Walmart was storing intermodal shipping containers along the south side of the property, visible from Highway 50. Staff approached Walmart about finding a potentially better location for these containers, the number of which will vary seasonably, seasonally depending upon promotions happening within the store. Now, although permitted within the I Industrial District, permanent outdoor storage is an, as an accessory use, is classified as a special review use within the GC General Commercial District. Again, as you've seen previously, special review uses are described in Section 1710-030 of the Unified Development Code as a type of discretionary use under zoning in which certain aspects of the use may potentially cause conflicts with surrounding uses and may therefore need additional conditions imposed upon them to mitigate these conflicts. The reason permanent outdoor storage is categorized as a special review use within the GC Zone District is because general commercial uses can be surrounded by a wide variety of other types of uses. Thus, the scale, location, and screening associated with permanent outdoor storage and how it may impact those surrounding uses becomes a critical point of the analysis. Section 1705, 140L references outdoor, references criteria outdoor storage areas must meet, particularly where they abut any kind of residential or lesser-intensity commercially-zoned areas. These areas include, these requirements include hard surfacing of the, the area involved in the storage and methods of screening and site location which are intended to minimize the visibility of such storage areas. Thus, in meeting these criteria, the applicant has to demonstrate that the purpose, that the proposed yard will not adversely affect surrounding uses. Now, the analysis for any special review use, again, as stated previously, can be found in Section 1710-030B of the Unified Development Code. It involves compliance generally with the requirements of Chapter 1710, consistency with the purposes of the, of the UDC, and that the use can be found to be compatible with surrounding land uses and the area where the use is to be situated. Section 3 of the staff report summarizes how this proposal is viewed in light of these criteria. Note that the applicant responded to staff's suggestion that the location of the outdoor storage would be best if moved as far away from the Highway 50 corridor as possible. The location they have selected would be north of the shared lot line with the AutoNation dealership. This location has the added advantage of minimizing its visibility from the residential areas west of Dozier Avenue and in fact would border what is presently used as pastureland to the north. It should be noted that the applicant has agreed to screen this area and address public works concerns regarding developing a plan to address any potential illicit discharges and demonstrate how placement of shipping containers will not affect overall site drainage, as well as to adhere to the fire district's request that containers which may contain hazardous materials be appropriately labeled. Ultimately, staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the three criteria for special review uses and this proposal can be considered at this location. Now, it's important to note, they are already doing this. These intermodal shipping containers have been going to Walmart for years. The reason this became an issue was because during the pandemic, when there were shipping issues with, you know, ports not being able to receive shipments on time, they got a glut of intermodal shipping containers all at once and we approached them about, is there a better location to have these? It will only involve dry storage. It will only involve these intermodal shipping containers which will be locked when not in use and they are not going to materially affect the internal configuration of the site in terms of its internal circulation. So this is already going on. We're just identifying the location on-site where they intend to put it and what they're going to do is a matter of a building permit when it comes to screening, how they're going to hide it with a screening wall. So with that, as a summary, as of Monday, staff has not received any phone, mail, or email concerning this particular proposal, although I'm given and understand we do have people in the audience who would like to discuss it this evening. Public notice requirements concerning the public hearing before the Planning Commission were met in the timeframe required by the UDC, which gave the Planning Commission jurisdiction to hold this public hearing. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, following a public hearing on this request, cite the four findings of fact as a certification of Canyon City, of Canyon City's jurisdiction to act on the special review use request for permanent outdoor storage as an accessory use of the property at 3105 East US Highway 50. Staff also recommends that Planning Commission recommend City Council approve the use by special review to allow permanent outdoor storage as an accessory use of the property at 3105 East US Highway 50, subject to the three conditions contained in staff's report. That would conclude my presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any Planning Commission's questions. We have Lynn Ross, who is the manager of the local Walmart here in the audience, as well as Elizabeth Field, who is with the law firm Cutac Rock, who was also? We have Lynn Ross, who is the manager of the local Walmart here in the audience, as well as Elizabeth Field, who is with the law firm Cutac Rock, who was also responsible for helping process this land use application. She's also available online to speak about this application as well, should you have any questions of her.
Okay. I do understand that we do have some individuals in the audience that would like to speak. First up would be Mr. Fred Tooney, or Tony. If you could go up and state your name and your address, I would appreciate it for the record.
Okay. Zadon?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Fred Tony, 71 Sunrise Mesa Drive, here in Canyon City. Thanks for letting us speak our piece today. You know, we had some residences at Sunrise Mesa with some concerns, and I wanted to bring those to your attention. One thing you didn't mention is, you didn't want to see it from the highway. But, and then the residents on the other side, but the other residences are four times further than some of the residents at Sunrise Mesa. The ones at Sunrise Mesa are close to 500 foot away. That's not very far. So, they're concerned about noise, what it's going to look like. I'll just go over some of these questions. What other towns in Colorado do they have these outdoor storage sites? I went by Pueblo today, and I didn't see one housing the C-cans. Maybe they got it enclosed, I'm not sure. And how's it going to be constructed, of course? What the hours are they going to operate? Will the lighting reach the residential areas adjacent to the site? What will the sound levels be? And will this add to the traffic problem around Walmart and around the new tire shop there? What's the access going to be to get the shipping containers back there? I know they're now, they're now, and they came during COVID, but COVID's long gone. So, I don't know why they're still there. Will you build a sound wall to prevent the noise and lights encroaching on the residents? And will this eliminate, there's one rental tractor trailer there for refrigeration that emits a really loud noise. It's probably over 90 decibels. It's really loud. So, those are the questions. I gave Ms. Ross the list of these questions, so she might want to address these, so. Did I cover it from some of the residents there? We got it all covered? Have him step up.
Sir, if you need to speak, you'll have to go up to the podium. Name and your address, please. And then we'll have Ms. Ross come up and address those questions specifically.
My name is Gary Nines. I'm at 25 Sunrise Mesa. And I don't think the argument that they had these trailers there because of COVID has any application to why we'd have to go forward with this process. I know there's going to be a fine line where you got to determine, well, it's a nice business, and they have a right to conduct their business, but we have a right not to hear it, or not to see it. So, there's a conflict there that has to be resolved somehow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ross, would you like to come up? Please state your name and your address.
Lynn Ross, 1876 Opath, up in West Cliff, or Cotopaxi. So, I see some of the questions, and I understand the concerns. I have been at this store for six years now, and we have operated out of these intermodal containers during the holidays due to the fact that it would be fire safety issues if we had all this merchandise inside of the stores. We can't, you can't manage or run a business with all of that freight. Does that kind of make sense to everybody? And we do it just during the high seasons is when we have it. So, what he was talking about with COVID was the fact that there were many, many ships that were stuck out in the ocean, and this affected every business across everywhere, not just Walmart. And so, when all of that merchandise wound up coming in and flooding in, we had nowhere to go with it because it had been out there for months. And so, with that being said, that's why we had so many during that timeframe out in the area where Patrick was speaking about. Then Patrick and I started the dialogue and had the discussion about moving the containers so that they weren't being visible right there. Since then, those containers have come off the lot completely. I don't carry them year round. There's, the store has grown since the 1999, when they first started there, and now the sales have continued to grow and grow and grow. And when that happens, you get in more merchandise that you need to sell, right? And so, when that, when that happens, you have to have the ability to put merchandise in these trailers for safety reasons. You can't possibly hold all of that merchandise inside of a store. It would cause fire safety issues. So, that's why we do it, in and out of the seasons. Generally, we won't carry trailers at all during most times of the year. We usually get them in October and carry them through December. That's, that's it. Like, right now, the trailers that are out there have been empty since December 1st. So, I'm just working on a company coming to pick them all up. That's what we're working on. There were 40, and I believe we're down to about, I think, 22 left for pickup. So, they're all empty. We've not been in and out of them since December. We try to keep the noise to a minimum, so I know that was one of the questions on here, was about the noise. So, I'm going to kind of go through your questions, and then if you have more, go ahead and ask me, okay? So, other towns in Colorado, there are other towns that actually do have it. They do have permanent storage year round, which I'm trying not to have permanent storage year round because it's more work for us. It's a lot harder for us to operate out of those trailers. So, my goal is to not have it. But Patrick and I had had the discussion that, as the store continues to grow, potentially, we might need to keep permanent trailers on the lot, and we wanted a solution for the future and for, you know, making sure that we were making everyone happy with that situation. How are they constructed? Again, they're just intermodal storage containers. They're 40-foot containers made out of metal.
But you're going to have a structure to cover those?
No. The structure that we're talking about is going to be...
A screening wall, basically a fence.
A fence that's going to block from city auto being able to see the containers. It will just be a fencing that will block it, a screening fence.
I don't think city auto cares if they see them, but, you know, residents. You look down, and if your business grows so much, what would they need 2,000 containers? Would they have to stack?
At that point, right, right. I see what you're saying. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can't answer that. We've been asked to put up a privacy screening fence. That's what we're looking at right now, right?
We'll have to keep the comments on microphones, so please, no audience, if you could. And I'll go ahead and just direct these questions. What hours will they be operating? It's just as you need them, correct?
Correct. It would be as we need them. Generally, we try very hard not to go outside at night at all because it's a safety issue.
And as far as lighting, will it reach residential areas adjacent to the site?
No.
I don't know that, but I mean, it's obviously for safety reasons, we're going to have to have them lit up.
Right.
Noise levels, we can't do anything about that because you get into the storage unit, you come out, that's the noise.
Right.
There is one that is down there at the end that says a temporary rental trailer with refrigeration that was emitting noise. Is that still there, and does it?
We only use that during the month of November.
Okay, so that's no longer there?
No. It might be there still. I don't think they've picked it up, but we don't have it running.
So, it's not running, so there's no there. So, it says, will you build a sound wall to prevent noise and lights encroaching on the residents? You've already kind of covered that between that and the tire place, right?
Correct.
Okay. How far from the residential areas will the site be located? We kind of know that. Now, does Walmart, do they own the property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, as far as, I would think, the storage units would be, I'm not going to say more conducive, but as far as cosmetic, at least they're not in the front. They're sort of toward the back.
Correct.
So, I don't know how many people this actually affects the storage units versus the residents. Is that the big problem? Is just how it looks, or...? Yes, sir, please.
What, I think the big problem is, I guess if you were here and you went across the street, across Main Street, that's about the distance. So, you can imagine, if you have those C-cans moving around at night, or, you know, the refrigeration unit that's not working anymore. But, you know, that's really loud.
They don't understand how they would be moving around at night.
If they deliver them at night, or they open them, put forklifts in there to get them?
Is that a possibility?
We don't move them, I'm sorry. We don't move them at night.
Right.
And the forklift runs every night for the last six years to put bales outside and things like that. That's always been something that we do, but we don't operate in and out of the trailers in the middle of the night.
Okay.
Okay, so there shouldn't be a noise level at night at all, then, right? Yes, sir.
Hang on a second. And then the visual side, you know, you mentioned the tire store. We don't want the tire store to see it, or the Chrysler dealership to see it. It's on the backside of Walmart. Like I said, it's like 500 feet from some of the residences up there, residential properties.
Can I ask a question of her? Have you considered just enclosing this with a privacy fence?
Well, that's what we were discussing.
Well, the way I understood it, when it was talked about, it was just going to be for one side. The dealership is how that came out. So, this is going to be a complete encirclement of it.
Well, no, because you still have circulation that's going through the parking lot. So, they've got two areas. They've got a row of 15 along the northerly edge of the property and a row of 25 along the southerly edge of the property. If you were to completely wall all of that in, you would be interrupting the circulation pattern coming in off of Berry Parkway.
I understand that part, but I'm talking on the backside along the barbed wire fence area that's currently separating the properties. Is that going to be encased in?
We will, we will be... We will be asking them to screen along the northerly edge of those 15 units on the north side of the lot. The issue with Sunrise Mesa, remember, all of those homes are elevated.
I understand that.
Our code, when we're talking about impact, is looking at the elevation where the use is happening. There's, if you're elevated, you know, above that, you're, yeah, you're going to see it. And I don't know that there's a whole lot that can reasonably done, be done to avoid that.
Especially with the added cost to Walmart for doing that, so.
Well, I don't, I don't know that, I'm going to say I don't know that cost is a huge factor at this point with covering it, but aside from covering it, I think the gentleman's point and a couple of other people were, what's it going to look like from the backside? And at this point, I hadn't heard anything about surrounding that backside, so they didn't have to look at those shipping containers. Because we were talking about, we didn't want the dealership to see it. We didn't want the city or the people driving through town to see it, but we don't, for lack of better words, care if the people living behind it can see it. Now, the fact that they're on an elevated platform and they're going to see the top of those, I think that's just going to be a fact of life because it's like any other building. Right now, on Sunrise Mesa, you see down on the top of all kinds of businesses. I don't know that those storage containers will make that an eyesore, but that's just my opinion. With that in mind, I just want to make sure we're doing something to cover the backside of that for the benefit of the...
You mean on the northerly edge of the north row? Okay. My understanding is that's part of the screening wall that's going to go in as well? Or, Elizabeth, is that, is that your understanding as well?
No. And, hi, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Field, and I'm representing Walmart with this special use application. And my understanding is that the fence that was requested and that we're planning to construct is going to be south... I may be getting mixed up when on the directions, but it's going to be south, basically between the containers and the tire store. And that there's only going to be one long stretch of fence.
But that's not their complaint, I know.
So...
May I ask one more question real quick?
Yes.
On the backside, on the east side of Walmart, west side of the tire place, trailers come through there and offload through the back, right? Is there also, I guess, a trash compactor, things like that? Is there other things that don't look as appeasing to the public eye?
So, right here, this is where our trailers come through. So, they drive through this way and park here. And then here is a trash compactor here also as well.
So, it's always been there?
Right.
For the last, at least, as long as you've been there. So, nobody's ever complained about the trash compactor?
No.
Or its unsightliness? Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? The north side of the property, where you've got the 15 containers over there?
Yes.
Can somebody please, I mean, is to the west of that, is that where the homes are that we're talking about?
Over here?
No, to the, to the other side, the west.
That's where Black Hills is.
Like, Black Hills is here?
No, that's the sewage.
Where are the homes that we're concerned?
Black Hills is over to the left of where your figure is.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, the homes are...
Across that, across the cow pasture, basically.
There's a better slide I can use for this.
Okay, but it's, it's all, so that's all elevated above the cow pasture, correct? That's all up on that high, that high hill or something up there? Okay.
Right.
Okay, just, I just turn clear my mind for...
I just, I guess my question is, I don't see how a privacy fence over there would help because it's elevated and you're going to see it anyway, no matter what.
You might see the top of it, but you're not going to have to look at the backside and the side of it.
Yeah, if they're not going to be there, but, you know...
So, so, over there, the only time that those trailers would be on this side?
Up in that section, way up there.
And these here too?
These would be here, this is what I'm, this is what we're proposing, where that is for the potential year round, right? And then the ones way up there are only there for October and November.
Well, an eyesore is an eyesore with what month it's there.
Right, right.
So, I understand your position, and I understand what the attorney was talking about, also understand what the residents are talking about, whether it's there one month, two months, or six months, or year round. An eyesore is an eyesore. Now, again, getting back to what I said, being elevated, you're going to see the top of a lot of stuff. You're going to see the top of that car wash. You're going to see the top of that building. In my, again, my personal opinion, the top of something is something you're going to live with because you're elevated. The side and the back of something is another issue.
Right, that, and, you know, if you have, you're going to have to put lights out.
Would you mind speaking?
Yeah. There's going to have to be lighting out there, and if that's shining right up, you know, into the residences?
I don't know that the lighting would shine up to you simply because it would be directed.
There will be no change to the lighting that's on site. There's been no change proposed, and there's been no change requested by the city to the existing lighting in the parking area.
That covers that.
So, there'll be no, no additional lighting in there.
No lighting, and I'm assuming the stores, lockers will be locked during the night, so there's no need to go out there.
Okay, thank you.
One more time.
If I could add one thing, the proposition that this is soundless is not true. You hear this, and it usually starts at 6:00 in the morning, beep, 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 with their offloaders loading stuff in and out. So, the proposition that it's soundless is untrue. And if it's going to be worse, well, that's a factor to consider. But the other thing that I want to know is, at some point, you have to have a limit here. You can't have Walmart say, well, we'll just add them seasonally when we need them. Well, what if the store grows 15 times in volume? And you have 15 times more trailers? Do you have 1,000 out there? There's got to be some boundaries for that, and I hope you establish some boundary for the noise, too.
That's what this hearing is doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any additional comments from you? Ms. Field, anything from you?
Just on that point, we have submitted only a request for a certain limited number of containers on site. And, you know, I'll let Lynn speak to this more, but I think if the need ever arose to expand beyond that, we would, we would do something else involving the city and, yeah.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Ms... So, it looks as though the total number of containers could be 40. That's the max. In the document, though, it mentions that potentially there could be up to 50 containers there. And so, where would those other 10 containers be stored?
We, we could be... We, we could be, still put them on the side where that red box is. We had enough room to be able to do that if we would have needed them. And the only reason I say that is because of what happened with COVID. I can't, I, I can't control that, you know? And so my fear was, what if? And that's why I went that high. Our goal, obviously, is to never have that many trailers. It's very difficult for us to operate that way.
Okay, and, and Patrick, I think the reason why we're reviewing this is because we did not want Walmart to store the containers where they were storing them during COVID, and we wanted them behind the building or not visible from Highway 50, right? Okay, all right. And I think there was some concern about double stacking, and it sounds like that is not an option at all.
It is, it is not permissible under the UDC to double stack intermodal shipping containers.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you.
Does the commission have any other questions?
Well, I have one, and I'm not trying to tell you how to run your business, but at some point, are you looking at a permanent storage facility?
I can't answer that question. Uh, that would be from home office, I don't have any, I, I could not answer that.
That's from Arkansas, man.
She might know something.
That's from, is it, is it Benton, or is it Rogersville?
Bentonville.
Benton, Bentonville.
I wish I knew that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Did you have a question? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess, quick question, so 40-foot shipping container adjacent to the, the proposed fence, is, it's obviously going to exceed the existing parking stall that is there, and, and I guess extend to the north. There's, there's that other parking area, I mean, I guess, how does that change your, I guess, your use of that area? And presumably, the, the parking is, and it's overparked, so we don't, we, we can lose those spots, and it's...
Yes, we're dramatically overparked with Walmart.
Yeah. Is, is there a circulation challenge back there with, with, I guess, on that side, it's 25?
So the, the, as you can see, at Berry Parkway, it narrows down to where it accesses that, that, I guess we'll call that a cul-de-sac. And actually, I mean, yeah, there is a row of parking in there, once you get into the site, that's sort of midway between the north and south areas there. Some of those, that parking may potentially go away, but the drive aisle lanes that go around that, particularly kind of to the north and around the north side of the building, that will remain. So the internal circulation will not dramatically change as a result of this.
Well, I have one more question.
I guess the, the driveline on the south side of that parking island would, would be covered by a shipping container.
Probably, yes.
I have one more question that just flew into my head. Where are you moving the pickup spot to?
We're not.
It's over there.
It's still going to be on that side?
Yep.
Okay. Because I was looking at that red line, I'm thinking, well, you're going to squeeze pickup in there?
No, 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 that, that red line is not indicative of a storage area. This is a vicinity map, and what that red line is showing, believe it or not...
That's the county line.
That's the city limit line.
Oh, okay. Well, then, forget what I asked.
Strike it from the record.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I will now close the public hearing. I will now call for a motion and a second to recommend approval to the city council for the permanent outdoor storage. Somebody, anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. I move that the Planning Commission adopt the four findings of fact regarding the proposed special use review use to allow permanent outdoor storage as an accessory use on the property of 3105 East US Highway 50 in the G C General Commercial District Zone.
Second...
I will second that motion.
Denise, will you call Roe, please?
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Now I'll call for a motion and a second to recommend approval to the city council for the permanent outdoor storage.
Um, I'll make that motion. I move the Planning Commission recommends the council, that the council approve the special review use to permit permanent outdoor storage as an accessory use of the property at 3105 East US Highway 50 in the General Commercial District Zone, subject to the three conditions described in Section 5, Paragraph 2 of the staff report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, too.
Denise, would you please call Roe?
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
All right, that'll be that one. That will go before city council. So if you have any further questions or concerns, y'all could meet up with them. Uh, C, on our special use, 212 South 5th Street, I now open the public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17, therefore, in the subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as set forth verbatim. Could we have a staff report from the city planner, please?
Certainly. Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, our third public hearing this evening involves a request by the prospective purchasers of the property at 212 South 5th Street for approval to locate a motel as the principal use of the property within the G C General Commercial Zone District. Under the city's land use code in the G C Zone District, this is considered a special review use. Subject property is located at the southerly end of South 5th Street, adjacent to the railroad right-of-way. It is surrounded by non-residential zoning on all sides, from CB Central Business to the north, to the G C General Commercial District to the east and west, and I Industrial to the south. The property was part of the original incorporation of Canyon City in 1872, although it has been subsequently subdivided. The existing building on site, according to assessor's records, dates from 1934. It was formerly the publication location of the Canyon City shopper, and had an attached caretaker residence. At the moment, it is currently unoccupied. Now, within the G C General Commercial Zone District, motel is classified as a special review use. And as you've heard twice already, special review uses are described in Section 1710-030 as a type of discretionary use under zoning in which certain aspects of the use may potentially cause conflicts with surrounding land uses, and may therefore need additional conditions imposed upon them to mitigate these conflicts. The definition section in the city's Unified Development Code, Section 1713140, describes motel as a building or group of buildings on the same lot containing guest units for short-term rental with or without kitchenette facilities. They therefore offer fewer amenities and services on site than do hotels, and as such, they tend to be more automobile-dominated uses, and it is the impact of trips generated by the use that triggers the additional scrutiny of a special review use. The applicant's proposal is to convert the existing building into a motel consisting of two guest units. This significantly reduces the amount of trips that can potentially be generated over a multi-unit motel. Now, the analysis of any special review use is found in 1710-030B of the Unified Development Code and includes three criteria: compliance generally with the requirements of Chapter 1710, consistency with the purposes of the UDC, and that the use can be found to be compatible with surrounding land uses and the area where the use is to be situated. Staff 3, or Section 3 of the staff report summarizes how this proposal is viewed in light of each of these criteria. While only two units in a motel may seem unusual, the city's definition of motel does not contain a minimum number of guest units a motel would need to have in order to qualify as a motel. Consequently, with only two guest units, traffic generation is minimized, and there is sufficient parking on site to accommodate this use. Also having a population of short-term rental residents at this location can potentially benefit surrounding retail, restaurant, and gas sale uses. Ultimately, staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the three criteria for special review uses, and this proposal can be considered for approval at this location. So with that, as of Monday, staff has received no phone, mail, or email call communications concerning this proposal. Public notice requirements concerning the proposal of the public hearing before Planning Commission have been met in a timeframe required by the UDC. Staff therefore recommends that the Planning Commission, following a public hearing on this request, cite the four findings of fact as certification of the Planning Commission's jurisdiction to act on the special review use for a motel as the principal use of the property at 212 South 5th. Staff also recommends that Planning Commission recommend that city council approve the special review use request to allow a motel as the principal use of the property at 212 South 5th Street. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. I think Tony, Tony, Tony Greer is representing the potential seller or purchasers of the property. He's also here to answer questions about this application.
Where's Tony? Mr. Greer?
Mr. Greer, do you want to add anything? Please state your name and your address.
I am Tony Greer, 901 Main Street, Canyon City. I represent the purchasers of this property. Um, I think Patrick did a great job of describing the use here. They basically want to take this two-unit building and convert it, which wouldn't require much work, but to tipper use, like Airbnb-type things.
Um, are there any questions from the commission? Yes, sir.
Patrick, just looking at the site boundary there, does, does the city not have right-of-way on South 5th?
Our, our right-of-way at South 5th actually ends at Water Street.
Huh.
And does that potentially have any access implications, not only for this site, but the adjacent?
I believe there, there is some sort of a shared access easement with the, what do we call that? The travel center immediately west. So they have access, and obviously, there's emergency access that can go through. But as a right-of-way, it is not right-of-way. They have parking in front of the business. Uh, they also have an area to the south of the building that can function as parking as well.
And I guess a question for the applicant, so no proposed changes to the, the 5th Street, not right-of-way, but the, the current active use of 5th Street?
No, no proposed changes. If you were to drive down there, what is it, concrete road, or it looks like a city street, actually ends at that alley there, Water Street. And so the property actually owns what you would see as a street, and they, the parking would be primarily on the south side of the building and not the west side of the building. I think there are four parking spaces, angled parking spaces along the west, west side of the house, or the building.
And I guess, one other quick, I guess, notice, the, you know, in the, on the west side of that building, there's some drainage, potential drainage issues? But, you know, there's some of that concrete slope straight for the building. Um, there are some, appears to be inlets, I don't know if that's a city storm drain infrastructure.
So it, it would be, it would be a public works concern, and they did review this application. That was not something that they, they cited as really needing a lot of attention, because I don't believe that there's any new impervious surface that's being proposed with this.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, I have one, Mr. Greer. Obviously, a hotel with two units is interesting. Uh, one night, extended stays, five days? Are they going to be going for possibly a month? You mentioned Airbnbs. Could you sense that there might be some people staying there for more than a night, or two or three?
Um, probably more than, than one night. The applicants came to Canyon City and saw that we are a tourist area, and we had a limited amount of homes during the rush season. So when they saw this, they thought it would be a good opportunity because of its central location and proximity to tourist amenities, that it, it might be attractive. So I think by definition, the, the short-term residents are less than 30 days. And from people that I know that have other short-term rentals, it's rare that you have someone stay even 30 days. Um, but we don't have a, a temporary vacation rental in the code, I don't believe, and that's why Mr. Mulready recommended the motel use.
Right. Is there a, is there an office somewhere?
In the middle, right now? So the, the northernmost unit was a residence or watchman's quarters. The middle was the office. And to the south, it's actually divided in three, but to the south, it's just a garage, and they intend to use that for storage.
Okay. Are there any additional comments or questions?
I had a question for Patrick. Is this boundary line from like the end of Water Street to the west of the site, all that property, all the way down to approximately 15th Street borders, the railroad property, all the way down? There's no city property behind any of those?
Well, it will depend upon the individual block, but, I mean, some, some blocks, the, the road right-of-way actually goes all the way south to the railroad, and in the case of, for example, 11th Street, it crosses over the railroad. So block by block, there are some roads that stop somewhere mid-block, and all they're doing at that point is providing access to however many lots there are south of them and north of the railroad.
But that's all something that the lot owners have to work out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? All right, if there are no additional questions, then I will close the public hearing. If there are any further questions for commissions for Patrick? None? I now call for a motion and a second to recommend approval to the city council for the motel as principal use of property.
I'll make that. I move that the Planning Commission adopt the four findings of fact regarding the proposed special review use to allow a motel as a principal use on the property at 212 South 5th Street in the General Commercial District Zone.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Denise, please call Roe.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Now I'll call for a motion and a second to recommend approval to the city council for the motel as a principal use of property.
I'll do, I'll do it again.
Go for it, Bob.
I'll do it. I move the Planning Commission recommend to the council that the council approve special review use per use to permit a motel as a principal use of the property at 212 South 5th Street in the General Commercial District Zone in beautiful downtown Canyon City.
Do we have a second?
Well, not to break with the tradition, but I'll second that.
Ah, awesome. Denise, would you please call Roe?
Commissioner Wellitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Suther?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye. I had one final question, I know this is all done, but is there a, a time limit when this might be done? I should ask that question.
You know, I don't think there's any time limit. The, the unit to the north is ready to go now, so they could conceivably start advertising this as soon as council approves it. Right now, they've been taken out of town for some other kind of urgent business, so it won't be immediate, but I would say it would happen probably before the tourist season starts.
Excellent, okay, thank you, sorry, that was out of order.
You're the boss.
All right, uh, Section 5. Now we get to elect a chair and a vice chair. Since Mr. Maloney has left us, we'll have to find out who really wants to take this position. So... I think you have in front of you a couple of ballots. One for chair, one for vice chair, thank you very much, because we used to just write these on tissue paper, right? So...
We're going to take nominations?
Yeah, I guess we could.
I nominate Randy Smith for chairman.
Second.
After all this? All right, then I think what we need to do is circle one name for chair, and then pass it to Denise, is that correct? Yes. All right.
I don't want you peeking, I want to look. I don't want you peeking, buddy. It's a top-secret ballot.
You're a top-secret.
Top-secret. Eyes only.
That's, it should be pretty easy. All right, now we can just discuss amongst ourselves while she counts everything.
Give us a tally.
I didn't recognize Tony.
Didn't?
No. I hadn't seen him since he's grown all this year.
I'm going to say he's got rad.
No kidding.
And the results are?
Randy Smith. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Randy.
Thank you very much. Okay. I don't know, yeah, we'll see. Do I get to change my nameplate yet?
Well, I can do that for you.
We doing nominations for the vice?
Let's do nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Dee Clement.
Uh, Dee Clement declines. I would like to nominate, uh, Chairman Ladue.
Ladue?
Ladue, excuse me, I'm sorry.
All right.
I'll second that one.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? It's going to be pretty easy if we don't have any competition.
Well, you can mark whoever you want on here, whether they like it or not.
I understand that, I understand that. Don't look at this. I didn't know you could deny.
You're not peeking again, are you? No, that's why I gave it to her.
I know, I see how you are.
You like to cheat.
What?
You like to copy.
I can't believe that.
You're one of those guys that likes to copy off of other people's work.
He's talking to you. And while the, uh, the votes are being tallied, uh, a little announcement. I think I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, February 21st, 2024 at 6:00 PM, we have scheduled a joint planning commission, city council, where we are going to be discussing the, the land use development process in Canyon City and, you know, from the general to the specific, from annexation and zoning all the way down to final plat and site plan, and the agreements, the related agreements that go with them, what we can and what we can't ask for as a municipality in those, how those will function, triggers, all those sorts of things. Because we anticipate you're probably going to be seeing bigger developments, and if you know that some of these things have been negotiated with the applicant before it gets to a public hearing, you might have more of a comfort level with the recommendations that we're bringing you. So that will be, um, a scheduled joint planning commission, city council, again, February 21st at 6:00 PM. We are also going to be scheduling a joint planning commission, city council meeting to discuss signs. Specifically, we've got some issues you may have heard about with feather flag signs downtown. So this is part of, you know, we're, we're broadening the scope of what council is looking at and who they're talking to and listening to on this issue. We think planning commission is probably, since obviously Title 17 falls under the planning commission's purview, um, this is an important conversation for, um, planning commission and council to have as well. I do not have a set date on that yet, I will have to communicate that with you offline. Thank you.
Um, Patrick, there's a vision committee meeting on the 21st that's scheduled for two hours from 5:00 to 7:00, so is that just going to, we're just going to cut that one short and do the joint meeting at 6:00?
Uh, as far as I know, that one is starting at 6:00. I think that, isn't that also the night, is there a URA meeting that's happening that night, or? No, that, just, all right, I will, I will get with Cindy. I was told it would start at 6:00. If it doesn't, I will, I will communicate that the start time is at 5:00.
Vision, vision goes from 5:00 to 7:00, the vision committee meeting.
Okay.
But I'm sure everyone's fine with cutting it at an hour and then doing the joint meeting. That's probably what will happen.
Okay, I, I will confirm that with Cindy and I will communicate that with all of you.
Now, did you say that on the 21st that would start at 6:00 for us?
Well, right now, what I was told is it's starting at 6:00. What I'm hearing is those vision committee meetings actually start at 5:00, so I need to get some clarification on whether it's 5:00 or 6:00. And as I said, when I hear that, I will communicate that with all of you offline and let you know.
Well, Jerry, you're on that group, right? You can just tell them what we want, right?
I'm okay with cutting meetings short, trust me. And the second thing, just to clarify, do we, will we have a planning commission meeting the next week?
At this point, I do not have any items scheduled for hearing at that meeting yet.
All right. Okay.
I would, I would like to space these out so we don't have three public hearings in one night and then go two months without any planning commission hearing. That, that would be nice.
All right, Ms. Denise, do you have results?
I do.
And who's the lucky vice?
Brian Ladue.
Brian Ladue. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read this.
Congratulations, Brian.
My acclamation board member, Randy Smith, will serve as chairman for a term expiring. I just want you to note, see here, this is June 30th, 2016.
Oh.
So I'm not sure when my term expires.
Tomorrow.
I was in a hurry.
So I'm thinking maybe, is it one year, two years, three years?
It's, it's through the balance of calendar year 2024.
Okay, all right, so we'll do this again later. And, uh, my acclamation board member, Brian Ladue, will serve as vice chairman for a term expiring at the same time.
Tomorrow.
Could be. Is there any other announcements for tonight's meeting?
No, sir.
Does the commission have anything more? Then I will see y'all on the 21st of February. This meeting is adjourned.